Good evening and welcome to our regularly scheduled November 4th School Board Meeting. At this time, please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. After the pledge, please remain standing for a brief moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, I would like us to share a moment of silence for East View High School 10th Grader David Roses, who passed away on October 14th. Thank you. All right, good evening, School Board. A first order of business today is the approval of our agenda. There are no additions or deletions to the agenda today. Is there a motion to approve the agenda as outlined?
Motion to approve the agenda?
Second.
Motion by Sakoudin, seconded by Jackie. All those in favor of approval say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, or those opposed, motion carries on a four zero vote. Next, our first item of business after the approval is our recognition by the School Board. I would like to welcome David Losdeter, Principal at Thomas Lake Elementary, to the podium. Thomas Lake has been awarded a Positive Behavioral Intervention and Support Certificate from the Minnesota Department of Education.
Good evening. Thank you so much for having us today. As you said, my name is Dave Losdeter. I'm very proud principal at Thomas Lake Elementary, and I'm joined here tonight by Jen Zaski, our school psychologist, and Colleen Frank, our Assistant Administrator. And us three are just three of the members of our PBIS team at Thomas Lake, and I want to emphasize how important teamwork is to creating a strong PBIS within a school. PBIS at Thomas Lake stands for positivity, respect, integrity, determination, and excellence. And those are the values and characteristics that we want to see, or character traits that we want to see in our students and that we teach every single day. And we know that for kids to be successful in school, it starts with the whole child. And so all the academic pieces come from knowing how to be part of community, knowing how to create good friendships, and knowing how to be able to take care of their selves and their feelings. And so that stems from PBIS. Like I said, it's a team effort at Thomas Lake. The whole team works together. Our PBIS leadership team works to implement the systems. And then, of course, it takes all the buy-in and support from our community, from our kids, from our staff, all of us working together to help. And I just want to recognize that PBIS, our award was an sustaining exemplar. So that means it's something we've been doing over a long period of time. So although it's been long since my arrival, I am so proud to see it in action and get to see the positive results that it's had for our school. So really proud to be recognized and thank you for that recognition.
Excellent. Next, I'd like to welcome Adriana Henderson, Principal at Glacier Hills Elementary, to the podium to introduce the Art Educator of the Year for the State of Minnesota.
Good evening, Chairperson Johnson, School Board Members, and Superintendent Bolsoni. I'm Adriana Henderson. As I, as you mentioned, Principal at Glacier Hills Elementary School of Arts and Science. And we have with us Estelle Sukoo, Assistant Administrator. And I am just thrilled to introduce you to Mrs. Erin Paulson, our art teacher at Glacier Hills. We recently found out this summer that she was named Art Educator of the Year by the Art Educators of Minnesota, AEM, for the 2024-25 school year. This award recognizes exceptional contributions in art education. Ms. Paulson has been a phenomenal member of our school community for 19 years, fostering countless students' love of art and creativity. Her passion for art and commitment to student success are evident in her lessons. She has created a vibrant and inclusive art program that enriches the lives of all of her students. Her lessons and projects are a testament to collaboration as she works closely with our school's magnet core team and our classroom teachers. Some of her most cherished projects have been those that allowed her to connect with students and learn more about their cultures. In addition to receiving this most recent recognition, Ms. Erin Paulson was named Magnet Schools of America Teacher of the Year for Region 6 in 2022. We are incredibly proud of Ms. Erin Paulson and the recognition. She is well-deserving.
Thanks.
Congratulations. Well done. Congratulations. Very proud of you. Well done. Congratulations. Great. Next up, I would like to welcome Superintendent Bolsoni to the podium for his recognition of students and staff.
Good evening, Chairperson Johnson, School Board Members. It's a pleasure to be here tonight. I'm going to combine some of the recognitions still to come with my superintendent's recognitions as well. So first off, congratulations to the Rosemont High School Marching Band on winning the Youth in Music Marching Band Championship, and the East View High School Marching Band for taking second place. We will be inviting both to be recognized at the December Board Meeting, and I think it's fair to say that District 196 is becoming the best district in the state for marching band competitions. Secondly, I'd like to recognize many different District 196 athletic teams that had an outstanding fall sports season, and many teams are participating or did participate in postseason competitions, including our Apple Valley Girls Volleyball, won their six AAAA, 4As section championships, and are headed to the Minnesota State High School League State Tournament this week. Cassandra Lee from Eagan High School placed third in the girls' state tennis tournament. Our Eagan High School Girls Soccer Team tied for third in the state tournament, and our Eagan Boys Soccer Team won the state championship held at US Bank Stadium last week, four to three in overtime. We also had individual qualifiers from all four of our high schools, Apple Valley, Eagan, East View, and Rosemount, in boys' and girls' cross-country meet, and the Rosemount Boys' Cross-Country finished fifth in state. So it was a really exciting week, and we still have at least one team here still alive with Apple Valley volleyball. Later this evening, the board will be asked to approve resolutions designating the week of November 14th to the 18th as Clerical and Secretarial Employees Appreciation Week and Maintenance Support Employees Appreciation Week in District 196. There are more than 800 clerical and secretarial employees who fill various important positions and provide services that are essential for the day-to-day operations of our schools and the district. There are also more than 180 maintenance support employees in District 196. They protect the community's investment in our schools and help to provide safe, secure, and clean environments that are conducive to teaching and learning. And at this time, I'd like to ask any clerical, secretarial, and maintenance support employees who are with us this evening to stand and be recognized. And if not, we'll make sure they get this message to watch the board meeting. Thank you. Next, I'd like to invite our Director of Finance and Operations, Christopher Anyango Robshaw, Coordinator of Finance, Danny Duchene, and Controller Adam Lloyd to join me at the podium for the next recognition. I am pleased to share that District 196 has earned the Certificate of Excellence in Financial Reporting from the Association of School Business Officials International, ASBO, for the 22nd year in a row. ASBO International recognizes districts that have met the program's high standards for financial reporting and transparency. The school district earned the Certificate of Excellence for its annual comprehensive financial report, the AFCR, for fiscal year 2023. I'd like to thank these three leaders of our finance team and all of our budget managers who serve as responsible stewards of public resources. As you will hear during the annual audit report later tonight, we are a large, complex organization, yet each year, this team employs systems and controls to ensure that we are adhering to high standards in government accounting, budget allocation, monitoring, and reporting, and they do it exceptionally well. So thank you three for your leadership, and congratulations to the department. Okay, finally, I'd like to invite Art Coulson to the podium to receive recognition for his many years of board service. Welcome, Art. As many of you know, Art Coulson resigned from the School Board this summer, actually this fall, after 16 years of service. Art was appointed to the School Board in February 2008 and was elected four times, in 2009, 2013, 2017, and for the last time in 2021. Over those years, he served in a variety of capacities and was the liaison to a number of committees in the district. His work prior to being on the board as chairperson of our Native American Parent Advisory Committee in APAC, and then later as the Board Representative to the Tribal Nation Education Committee, has enhanced our understanding and partnership with our indigenous community. Since 2008, he has seen the district office open, the state withhold school district funding resulting from the recession, new STEM grant funds for learning opportunities in the district, the start of the 196 Magnet Schools, the passing of our Operation Technology Bond referendums, the opening of our 19th elementary school, and the approval of the 20th, the move to one-to-one technology for students, new programs, programs like Full Day Kindergarten and Aviation, and an enduring commitment to our AAA philosophy with students thriving in academics, arts, and athletics. Art, you've spent more time serving our schools than most school, than most students typically spend in our schools, and in doing so, you've impacted generations to come. We want to thank you for your dedication to 196, always making decisions in the best interests of our students and our community. And as a token of our appreciation, we'd like you to please accept this brass bell as a symbol to your service to our schools. So thank you, Art. All right, thank you. And that concludes my recognitions for this evening.
Excellent. Thank you, Superintendent Bolsoni. Next on the agenda is our special communication request. We have three special communication requests this evening. People who would like to speak during a special communication request must submit a form at least five working days in advance of the meeting. Ten speakers receive up to four minutes to share comments. We do use a timer for public comments. The timer when your time is started for our speakers tonight, there is three little lights on the podium. It will turn green when your time is started. It will turn amber when you have 30 seconds left, and it will turn red. When it turns red, please conclude your comments. As a reminder, the board uses our special communication requests as a time to listen. As such, board members generally do not respond to special communication requests. If there are any questions or follow-ups asked, a member of the administration or School Board may follow up after the meeting. Our first special communication request speaker tonight is Lillian Norland. Lillian, I'd love for you to approach the podium, and if you could just start by introducing yourself in connection to the district.
Good evening, Chairperson Johnson, School Board Members, and Superintendent Bolsoni. My name is Lily Norland, an eighth-grade student at St. Joseph's School in Rosemount. I stand before you today to share my heartbreaking experience with District 196 this fall and to discuss a policy that has made me question whether our school district truly has the best interests of its students in mind. From a young age, I've had the privilege of playing basketball with the Rosemount Area Athletic Association. I remember when I first tried out for the traveling team in fourth grade. Over the years, I played on the A-team from grades fourth through seventh, and we consistently ranked among the top 16 teams in the state. Throughout this journey, I've always felt included and appreciated by my teammates and coaches, despite the fact that all my teammates attended public schools while I have been the only student attending a private school. Basketball has always been a source of joy and positive experiences for me in Rosemount, until recently. This summer, I received an email announcing that due to a lack of numbers, some eighth-grade girls would be asked to play high school basketball this year. I learned through conversations that the plan was to take the entire returning A-team and move us up to high school. I was excited about this opportunity to represent Rosemount High School. I hope this experience would help me learn more about the school and establish friendships and connections with students and staff. My mom diligently researched my eligibility and discovered with the help of Minnesota State High School League that I could play for Rosemount High School. However, when we reached out to Will Finley, the athletic director at RHS, we were met with disheartening news. He informed us of a District 196 policy that forbids me from playing for the high school, and due to this fact, I could play for any other private or public high school in the state. He informed us to use this information to find somewhere else to play. To hear this felt like a slap in the face. Every returning player from my past team, plus two additional players from the team below, are now playing Rosemount High School basketball without me. This process had made me feel like I'm not wanted or valued in Rosemount Athletics. I've been forever changed by enduring this painful policy. I have more Irish and Rosemount High School apparel in my closet than regular clothes. I regularly attended Rosemount High School sporting events to cheer on my hometown. I'm embarrassed by the lack of reciprocating respect this district have shown me. I'm incredibly grateful for my mom's persistence in reaching out to the district athletic supervisor and the superintendent, but their responses only confirmed the hurtful nature of this policy. I received an outpouring of support from teammates, parents, and coaches voicing their disagreements regarding this unfair policy and that I deserve to be playing with my teammates. While this policy change, if voted upon, won't affect me this season due to timing, I want to work with my mom to advocate for a change that will benefit future students from St. Joseph's. I want to ensure that future generations of students don't experience the pain and heartache that I did. If this change does not take place, I don't plan to give up. I will only work harder to prove to you all this is wrong and make students feel unwelcome and ashamed. For those who may not know, St. Joseph's is a small private school in Rosemount, serving students from preschool through eighth grade. I've cherished my time there, and the strong sense of community we share is evident tonight with many parents, family, students, and faculty members showing up to support myself and this cause. Numerous times during this process, it was suggested I just transfer schools. I would never want to cut my time short at St. Joseph's and find it offensive that adults would suggest this as a solution to this issue. In closing, I urge you all to consider the impact of this policy. Let's work together to create a more inclusive and supportive environment for all student athletes in our community. Thank you all for listening. Thank you.
I'd like to invite our next speaker to the podium, Ms. Kelly Norland. And Kelly, similar, if you could start by stating your name in connection to the district.
Good evening. My name is Kelly Norland. Good evening, Chairperson Johnson, School Board Members, and Superintendent Bolsoni. I am a graduate of St. Joseph's School and Rosemount High School, and mother to the brave young lady who just spoke. Thank you for this opportunity to address an issue affecting our students and our community. Tonight, I am here to discuss the current district policy that prevents private middle school students from non-continuation schools from joining public high school sports teams. This policy restricts access, creating an unnecessary divide in our community, and contradicting the values of inclusion and community that our district promotes. Our district has a strong commitment to fostering a welcoming environment where every child can pursue their interests and talents. Yet, there is a discrepancy in this vision. Homeschooled middle school students can try out for high school teams while private school students cannot. This raises a simple question: Why do we allow one group but not the other? Take, for example, the students at St. Joseph's School. With an average graduating class of fewer than 28, most students continue on to Rosemount High School. By allowing them to join high school sports, we help form bonds with future classmates. Team sports build more than physical skills. They foster teamwork, commitment, and relationships. By barring private school students from these experiences, we limit their opportunities to grow and connect. This policy is also an exception among neighboring districts. In fact, most follow the Minnesota High School bylaw, which allows private school, middle school students to participate in public school sports. This bylaw is included in the packets applied. Some even go above and beyond providing buses to bring students from private schools to high school practices, a powerful example of inclusion. I have heard arguments that because our district is so large, we do not need additional students to try out for sports teams. But this perspective misses the point. When we close the door to some students, we risk sending the message that they are less valued. This is not the message that Rosemont or District 196 should be sending. It is easy to think this policy only affects a few families, but to those families, it is significant. It influences whether our children feel like they belong, whether they have a seat at the table, and whether they can fully engage with public school peers in high school. Denying private school students the chance to participate risks creating a divide and labeling them as unwanted. Notably, larger school districts like Anoka-Hennepin, St. Paul, and Minneapolis all allow private middle school students to join public high school sports teams. We're only requesting the same opportunity for District 196 students. Some may worry that if this decision is left to athletic directors, it may face resistance, but as board members, you are here to advocate for our students and establish policies that promote inclusion. By reconsidering this policy, you'll be sending a clear message: Our district values every student's right to grow, learn, and be included. The Minnesota State High School League requires only a simple form to participate. I've included an example in the packets provided, demonstrating how other high schools manage this easily. These procedures are straightforward and require minimal administrative effort, offering a significant benefit for students who might otherwise be excluded. Finally, I want to thank Lily for sharing her experience. Your courage to stand up for others, even if the change does not benefit you, is personally remarkable. Please remember Susie Kason's words: Strong people stand up for themselves, but stronger people stand up for others. Thank you for your time and attention as you consider this important step to more inclusive district. Let's ensure every student has the chance to build lasting connections, develop life skills, and experience the pride of being part of our community. Thank you.
Thank you. I'd like to welcome our final speaker for special communication requests to the podium, Erica Birkenholz. And Erica, similar, if you could start by introducing yourself in connection to the district.
My name is Erica Birkenholz, and I am a resident of Apple Valley. Buenos tardes, todos. Estoy aquí esta noche porque soy madre de dos hijos. Mi hija tiene siete años y mi hijo tiene tres, si somos bilingües. Good evening, everyone. I am here tonight as a parent of two children. I have a seven-year-old daughter and a three-year-old son, and my husband and I are raising a multilingual family, which we see as a major asset. I am also here tonight representing the hundreds of families who have previously or currently enrolled their children in one of the four Spanish immersion daycare centers located within our district boundaries. We, like many families, have been worried about where to enroll our children when it is time for kindergarten. This is a reality for parents raising multilingual children in District 196. You see, there is simply no option for families wishing to continue Spanish language acquisition. Instead, they are forced to turn to other districts that offer immersion programs just to meet their children's educational needs. These are districts like Eden Prairie, Edina, Minneapolis, St. Paul, Richfield, Prior Lake, Minnetonka, Roseville, South Washington County, Cottage Grove, and St. Louis Park, just to name a few. Unfortunately, our family became one of those statistics when we made the difficult decision not to enroll our daughter in this district. However, we are proud to share that she is currently thriving in second grade. She can fluently read, write, and speak in Spanish due to the education she receives from the Richfield Dual Language Program. Here is where our district is creating a profound inequity. As you heard from a 196 student last month at the same board meeting, not all families have the means to afford driving their children to another district simply because there is no opportunity here. I'm not only representing the hundreds of families from daycares, but also on behalf of our thousands of native Spanish-speaking families. I'm an ELD, or an English Language Development teacher, at the elementary level. At the last District Professional Development Day, I participated in the science of reading training, along with all of the other elementary teachers. In Unit 17, the text we read emphasized the need for Spanish language instruction and the benefits it has on English and Spanish reading proficiency. One quote from the text read, "Explicit Spanish phonics instruction has been shown to improve Spanish-speaking students' reading achievement in both Spanish and English." Additionally, the Reading League's joint statement about literacy needs for multilingual students states, "Whenever possible, students should have access to dual-language instruction." It's clear that the science of reading training our district is providing supports the idea of Spanish immersion programming. We already have some systems in place at the secondary level that indicates our district values this initiative. In the high school and middle school level, we offer heritage Spanish classes, and often the challenge of starting an immersion program is making sure that the opportunity is supported all the way through graduation. In our case, we already have the secondary portion addressed, so it's simply elementary that we need to complete this opportunity. Even though I've spoken on behalf of the large number of families that I am here representing tonight, I am most importantly here on behalf of my three-year-old son. For him, this is an urgent issue. With over 110 dual-language programs in the state, according to MDE, can we prioritize creating a timeline and creating an initiative to add just one program? Time is of the essence, as the number of residents who are interested has compounded and will only continue to increase. Thank you for your time and consideration tonight.
All right. Next on our agenda is the consent agenda tonight. We have 20 items on our consent agenda. They include the minutes of the October 7th, 2024 Regular School Board Meeting, the minutes of the October 7th, 2024 Special School Board Meeting, gifts, grants, treasures, reports for September 2024, summary of claims for September 2024, revenues and expenditures report for September 2024, schedule of investments for September 2024, personnel, pay rates for substitute and temporary employees, agreement for clinical experience with the University of North Dakota, agreement for student teaching with North Dakota State University, agreement for student teaching with University of Minnesota-Morris, agreement for student teaching with University of Wisconsin Superior, Clerical and Secretarial Employees Appreciation Week, November 18th through the 22nd, Maintenance Support Employees Appreciation Week, November 18th through the 22nd, employment agreements, Minnesota State University-Mankato Joint Powers Agreement, temporary construction agreement with the University of Minnesota, and Rosemount Middle School Construction Bid Package. Are there any items on the consent agenda that board members would like to remove tonight? Seeing none, I'll take a motion to approve. Motion to approve by Sakoudin, seconded by Leah. All those in favor of approval of the consent, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries on a four-zero vote. That brings us to our report section. I'd like to welcome Mark Stotts to the podium to give us an update on the bond construction.
Chair Johnson, members of the School Board, Superintendent Bolsoni, I'm here tonight to give you a presentation and an update on our current construction projects within the district. As everybody recalls, but I'll say it anyway, this is a result of the referendum that passed in May of 2023, and some projects are in the construction phase, other projects are in the planning phases at this point, and so I'll update some of those this evening. So the agenda tonight, I'll provide you some construction updates on projects that are already started, then I'll review where we're at with our activity centers. I'll talk a little bit about the Privacy Subcommittee, and then the projects that were just getting off the ground and were in the preliminary planning stages for Valley Middle School, Scott Highlands, and Falcon Ridge. So Elementary 20, if you've been up near the site at the intersection of Akron Avenue and Bonner Path in Rosemount, you can see that there is a lot of progress being made on the new elementary, number 20. We do not have a name yet. That will come at a later date, but it's a replica of East Lake Elementary in Lakeville. Construction's in progress, and we're projecting completion the fall of 2025. And we have a link to time lapse that show the construction. Obviously, it's evening right now, but if we go to just the last stage... Obviously, it's evening right now, but if we go to just the last day, probably not a lot happened today because of the weather, but you can see there's substantial progress being made on this building. And if you get the opportunity to go up there, or if you would like to go on-site, you can contact me and we can arrange for a tour of what's happening right now. Dakota Ridge, the building we're in right now, again, you've probably seen the construction outside. It's the addition of six classrooms as well as a multipurpose gym, and scheduled completion is also fall of 2025. And if you follow this link, we also have construction updates on the website. Rosemont Middle School, we are getting very close, so the designs have been done. The bids were received in October. We are on budget for this project. Again, the location of this will be at the intersection of County Road 42 and Biscayne Avenue in Rosemount. We did close on the purchase of that property on Friday, so very recently. Construction is imminent. We don't have a really set and sewn timeline, but we hope to get started this fall. And here, this is just a rendition. The entrance to this facility is going to be... Oh, shoot. Help me out. Scott? No, not Biscayne. Boulder Trail, Boulder Trail, which is a road yet to be constructed, but the entrance will be on Boulder Trail. This shows the entrance off to the right is where the bus drop-off will be. If you go around the building, it'll be where parents can drop off students, and there will be staff parking there. And again, it's a replica of Eastlake, so it should look very familiar to people. Can't believe that. We've talked so much about Boulder Trail. I can't believe I blanked out there. I apologize. So the Activity Center Philosophy Committee. We have a committee made up of athletic directors from all four high schools as well as principals. There's been representatives of community education on this committee as well as operations staff. And in fact, this work is ongoing. The committee met for two hours today, but we're getting very close on design plans and so forth. Eastview and Apple Valley will be the first two Activity Centers that we'll start on, and then Rosemount and Egan will start a year later. So the Activity Center is made up of really two different spaces. One is what you would call, some people would call a fieldhouse. We listed here as an Activity Center box. The other section is a storm shelter, which will house various components, like a lobby area, weight room, those types of things. But what we're trying to do is be as consistent as possible at all four Activity Centers at all four high schools. And so every Activity Center will have four courts, a three-lane upper-level walking track, lower-level straightaway lanes on both sides of the track for track purposes, six hoops per court, sound systems, scoreboards, volleyball badminton, pickleball, touchscreen controls, storage in the corners, 1,200 square feet of storage below the mechanical, and curtain dividers between the courts, daylight windows, and of course, pull-out bleachers. Also, long jump pits, pole vault pits, connections and links to the ancillary box and connections to the main building will be included in all four Activity Centers. So if you look at an Activity Center, what the design is going to look like in the main box is four wood courts and then a multipurpose level court at each of the four sites, and then you can see the running lanes on each side of the courts. On the upper level, it will be a three-lane walking track, which will be a multipurpose surface, and then stairwells and storage on each of the four corners. So in the ancillary box, this is fairly recent code where it has to serve as a storm shelter for the staff and students in that building. It'll have daylight and windows, two-level design, restrooms on both levels, lobbies on both levels, a community head office at the entry of both levels, storage for concessions, flexible multipurpose space, and weight room. And here we see Eastview High School, which is probably the furthest along in terms of planning. The main school, you can see there is in the middle of the diagram, the white building, and the Activity Center is off to the northeast of the existing high school. It'll be connected by a link that's indicated in yellow in the diagram. And this is a rendition and the current site plan. And then this just shows the layout. Again, the four courts, three of them will be wood, one is multipurpose surface, and then in the storm shelter, we have the lobby and various components. What's going to differ, we're going to be consistent between the four high school Activity Centers, but the layouts might look a little bit different because of the way they connect to the building, and so the connections are all going to look a little bit different. And there will be a connection from the main floor as well as the second level. And this is just a rendition that shows the existing building and then the new Activity Center. This is Apple Valley High School, and again, the main high school building is shown in white here. The Activity Center is off to the northeast, right north of the existing stadium. And this is a rendition. You can see the stadium there, and then just north of the stadium is the new activity, or where the new Activity Center will be located. Anybody that's driven by Apple Valley High School might ask the question. In fact, Board Member Magnusson asked this question. What's going on in the front of the building? Actually, this Activity Center is going to step on the existing tennis courts. And so we thought, okay, let's replace those tennis courts a year early so that they'll be ready for next year, and then we'll start construction on the Activity Center next year. So what you're seeing at Apple Valley High School in the front lawn is the new tennis courts. And again, it shows the rendition of the Activity Center, both main level and upper level and the connection. And we're trying to keep with the theme of the building, and so on the existing Apple Valley High School, you'll notice the circle, circular windows and so forth. We're trying to incorporate that in the Activity Center also. This is Rosemount High School, and so the Activity Center, you can see, is just south of the existing stadium and, or I'm sorry, west of the existing stadium, south of the existing turf field. And you can see it's going to take up some athletic fields there. Our intent is to replace those athletic fields. There's a lot of work to do there, and there's going to be a lot of work going on this summer. The roundabout on Highway 3 is going to be beginning construction next summer, as well as the city plans some projects on Chili Avenue at the same time, and we are going to begin construction at Rosemount High School next summer. So there will be a lot of activity going on on this site, as well as temporary construction roads. Some of the access might have to be from the Rosemount Community Center to get to some of the athletic fields, so it'll be a busy place. And again, you can see the Activity Center off to the right in this diagram, and we're also proposing an additional parking lot to service the activities at the Activity Center on the site. And again, a rendition of what it will look like. Here we have Rosemount High School again with the Activity Center and the new parking lot, and we're showing potentially a new practice field or a half-practice field located on that site also. And the interior layout. And this is what it should look like on the outside with the link off to the right on this diagram, or left on this diagram. Egan High School, we have not begun planning on this project yet. This project's going to present some challenges. The City of Egan is proposing to do a project in the park right next door where the tennis courts are located, and so we're trying to coordinate our construction and activities with the City of Egan. We have a lot of plans, planning to do still on that. We're not even quite sure where the Activity Center is going to be located on the site. We've got three options that are going to have to be studied. One is there to the northeast, the other is kind of to the northwest in the parking lot, and there's a third option kind of to the east. So stay tuned on this one. We are just beginning the planning on this particular project. Activity Center timelines, Eastview will be bid in January, February timeframe coming up, and it should open in the late fall, early winter of '26. Similar timeline for Apple Valley High School, bids are hoping to be received in February, open late fall, early winter of '26. Rosemount High School, a year later, bids in March of 2025, opens late fall, early winter 2027. The delay here is that Rosemount High School is having a major renovation done over the next three years. And so once the Activity Center is completed, we may have to house students in that Activity Center while the renovation is going on in the existing building. So it may delay opening that particular facility by a year. And then Egan High School will start the design in January coming up, opens late fall, early winter of 2027. Okay. One committee that maybe gets lost in the shuffler or isn't as publicized is our Privacy Committee, and it seems like every project that we deal with, we're dealing with restrooms. And so I just wanted to give you a high-level summary of what this committee has been working on. New construction, we're going to have a mix of single-stall restrooms as well as multi-stall restrooms, a mix of enhanced privacy, so the sink is inside the toilet area or the restroom area. That's mainly for handicap restrooms. And then inclusive restrooms, which have a communal hand washing. If you've been to Falcon Ridge Middle School, they have a real good example of how that works. Renovated facilities, if restrooms are in the path of renovation, we're considering updates to an inclusive model or enhanced privacy, given the space constraints and budget and everything else we have going on with those projects. And in existing facilities, every facility should have an inclusive option, which is multi-stall, and the quantity is based on building. And again, these particular items are in secondary schools only, so our middle schools and our high schools. Quantity considerations, one on each level of the facility, access in academic areas and access in public areas, so near gymnasiums and cafeterias, performance areas, that type of thing. And we're currently working on the Apple, on Apple Valley High School, Eastview High School, Rosemount High School, Falcon Ridge, Scott Highlands, and Valley Middle Schools. Okay, Valley Middle School renovation, design is happening as we speak. We're hoping to go out for bid in March of 2025, and construction in summer of 2025. And just as a reminder, at Valley Middle School, they are getting science room improvements, restroom renovations, performance space improvements, and then special education improvements, which are really not part of the bond, but because we're going to be doing work in the building, we'll renovate those areas at the same time. And here's the layout of their building, and you can see the toilet renovation, science remodel. So restroom, performance space, and special education. And those were the areas that are going to be renovated. Here's the performance space area as well as some other toilet renovations. Scott Highlands, we're in design at Scott Highlands. Again, we're hoping to go out for bid March of 2025. Summer, fall of '25 will begin the addition, and the summer of '26 will begin the science room improvements, restroom renovations, performance space improvements, and then there's going to be some LTFM or Long-Term Facilities Maintenance improvements, which are needed. This should, this just shows the current site, and then the addition will be to the front of the building on the east side, and there's also additional parking on the east side of the current parking lot. And you can see the spaces affected, and I did it again, but if you have questions, you can take a look at that. One of the big renovations here at Scott Highlands Middle School is the performance area. They don't have a performance area per se right now. This will be similar to Valley Middle School, where the performance area will be combined with the cafeteria. The cafeteria will be used for seating, and then there will be a stage area where the performances occur. And this is just a rendition of the seating space. Falcon Ridge Middle School, design is happening right now. Bidding is scheduled for February of '25, and again, you're starting to hear a common theme here. Science room renovations, restroom renovations, performance space improvements, and long-term facilities maintenance. And this is a picture of the current site. And then the spaces that will be affected. We are renovating some of the core areas in the houses to provide more classroom space, so that'll be really helpful because the science classrooms will take up more space than a regular classroom. So as we convert science classrooms, we have to create additional classrooms to make up for that lost space. And this is the upper level. And then we're doing some parking lot improvements at Falcon Ridge right now. There's jersey barriers that are outside, and they've been there for a couple of years. We're going to make that more permanent with curb and improvements to that area, so that should be a real help in terms of traffic flow. So next steps, Rosemount Middle School, we received bids and you approved bids this evening. We are within budget, and we are progressing with Rosemount Middle School. Eastview High School, we hope to go out for bid January, February of '25. Apple Valley, February of '25. Rosemount, March '25, and then Egan High School, design starts in January '25. Questions? I know a lot of information. I could have spent a lot more time going through. There's so many details involved in these projects that it's just absolutely mind-boggling, but I've got representatives of world architects here this evening. If you have really hard questions, they can answer those. So, any questions?
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments from the audience? Seeing none, questions or comments from board members? Jackie?
I really like that we kept into that Activity Center in the box and making sure everybody has a consistent experience because all of a sudden you build one, and two years later, you're going to build another one, and, oh, but we could add more, and we could do more feet than if we did this. So I think that that's helpful. The schools then will get to pick out their logos and their colors and what they want, and I'm sure there's some movement around the inside box of what they want, but basically we have a consistent plan of what is going to be in all four of them.
That was kind of the... That, that was kind of the topic of the meeting today. Those items that are going to be consistent in every activity center and every box, and those items that may be site-specific, or the building can kind of pick and choose. But I would say, for the most part, it's going to be very, very consistent when you go from one to the other. Again, the layout's going to look different just because of the way the storm shelter is attached to the building, but for the most part, they are going to be replicas.
Well, it's impressive, too, that you could figure them all out on the footprint of the property, that they can be, you can access them from inside the building.
Right.
That they're all being able to do that, not just standalone, okay, well, we've got the activity center, but you have to go outside and before you can...
Yeah, they'll have links where you can access them from the current building, but then there'll also be exterior entrances also, so...
Very nice. And here, I thought, after you said you closed on the middle school, I thought maybe you were done, out of, out of work, but maybe not.
No, not quite yet.
Not quite yet.
Any other questions or comments from board members? Leah?
Just one, one quick question. When you were talking about the enhanced privacy with restrooms, I will say thank you for bringing that up, because I've been out in community quite a bit the last couple of months, and it is a topic of a ton of questions, more than I could respond to at first, so I'm learning.
Sure.
And just quickly, does that also, can you just speak to, does that relate to also locker rooms or kind of other similar spaces, or how does that factor in?
We are not really touching locker rooms in this bond referendum. They weren't included, so maybe they'll be included in a future referendum. We do have locker rooms that need renovation, without a doubt. But, you know, the more you go to places in public, whether it be restaurants or grocery stores, a lot of them have privacy restrooms with individual stalls, and, and we're replicating that type of situation. I think there will be an option for traditional toilets with partitions and so forth, but then there will be a privacy option also.
Additional questions or comments from board members? Thank you for taking a very, very large project and breaking it down concisely for us in the community, because I know that there's a lot, when you put it like this, there's definitely a lot of moving parts going on at any given minute. It's really nice to get an update. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. That brings us to the new business portion of our agenda. Oh, no, I'm sorry, old business. I almost skipped the old business. Look at me. I would like to welcome Jeremy Sorenson to the podium to go over our elementary attendance areas, part two.
All right. Good evening, Chair Johnson, members of the board, and Superintendent Bolsoni. I'm here tonight to do a final reading of our elementary attendance area adjustments. We're asking the board to take action on this item this evening. So, I'm going to start by reviewing our process and then provide a two-part recommendation, which includes creating an attendance area for the opening of the new elementary building, and then balancing enrollment at the, at the elementary level across the southern portion of our district. All right. In terms of process, we learned from the secondary balancing process in 2022, and are replicating that process because of the scope and scale of proposals we're bringing tonight. These proposals span across the southern portion of the district, and will affect many schools. We use an internal steering committee and multiple subgroups to develop these proposals. Our process has been a collaborative effort involving building principals from the impacted schools, a diverse group of district staff, and then community feedback. Key departments such as transportation, student services, community education, secondary education, special education, finance, and communication have all contributed to the planning. We've reviewed enrollment across the district, consulted with our city planning departments regarding their comprehensive plan for future growth, and have analyzed multiple scenarios in terms of meeting the needs of balancing enrollment. We've gathered public feedback through multiple methods, including a survey where approximately 240 questions or comments were created by community members and by hosting multiple community information sessions. We use this feedback to make adjustments before bringing our proposal back to the board for a final decision this evening. So, when looking to make these attendance area adjustments and using our facilities efficiently and effectively, there are some district-wide focuses in mind. First, we want to maintain optimal school sizes and provide equitable experiences for our students and staff by targeting an ideal student population range of 600 to 800 students per building. We aim to ensure consistent educational experiences across the district. This is similar to the approach used in 2022 to establish more balanced secondary enrollments. Next, we are looking to alleviate overcrowding in elementary schools. And lastly, we're mindful of space needed for expanded early learning programming, which was a directive the board provided us in June. We are not yet prepared to bring a recommendation for early childhood. However, this proposal accounts for existing early childhood classrooms in neighborhood schools. And then, our ultimate goal is to ensure our facilities can continue to meet the needs of all students from early childhood through elementary education. In addition to our strategic priorities, there are a wide range of considerations we look at during this process. Consistent with past attendance area adjustments, our guiding principles have been to create attendance areas that protect the concept of neighborhood schools, are contiguous, and follow natural boundaries when possible, and allow room for growth. Consider middle and high school attendance areas, and adhere to all state and federal guidelines. Specifically, the Minnesota State desegregation and integration rules, making sure that through our adjustments, we are not creating any racially identifiable schools. So, Zone 1 is the new elementary school. It's located at the corner of Akron Avenue and Bonner Path in Rosemount. It's located in the current Red Pine Elementary Attendance Area, just north of the border between Red Pine and Rosemount Elementary Attendance Areas. Red Pine is designated by the color pink, and Rosemount Elementary is designated by the color gray on this map. In developing the attendance area for the new elementary school, we've carefully considered several key factors. Because of their proximity to the site, both Red Pine Elementary and Rosemount Elementary are the two schools most impacted by the adjustments. One of our primary goals is to alleviate overcrowding at Rosemount Elementary by ensuring the new boundaries promote balanced enrollment across all affected schools. This process reflects a commitment to maintaining neighborhood schools and supporting the well-being and academic success of all of our students, and taking into consideration future growth from community development. This slide shows the addition of the proposed attendance area for the new elementary school. It is the purple space highlighted and circled in the above image. It encompasses densely populated areas with close proximity to the school. It also encompasses a rural and industrial area of our district that connects to neighboring district boundaries. There's a chart on this page, and we show charts throughout this, and they all read the same way. It shows the current number of students living in an attendance area. So, in the yellow there, we have the current, and you can see the new elementary doesn't have anybody yet, because that's our current, and Red Pine is at 851, Rosemount Elementary is at 913. And then, what it would be through our proposed changes. So, balancing them out to new elementary would be at about 635, Red Pine at 636, and then Rosemount Elementary at 493. So, looking at that chart, we can notice that two-thirds of the students for the new building are actually coming from Rosemount Elementary. One of the main goals of creating this attendance area was to alleviate overcrowding at Rosemount Elementary. This proposal reduces the number of students living in the Rosemount Elementary Attendance Area from 913 to 493 students. This allows room for growth from the Amber Fields area and additional developments within its attendance areas. This is a known area of growth in our district, and we anticipate that Rosemount Elementary will quickly be within the optimal zone of student population within the next few years. So, so far, we've received about 240 questions or comments related to the attendance area proposals for both Zone 1 and 2 through our survey. And as mentioned before, we've hosted multiple community information nights, where community members were able to engage in asking questions and share comments. There were some clear themes within the questions and comments. Here, we're talking specifically about Zone 1, so creating boundaries for the new elementary building and alleviating overcrowding at Rosemount Elementary. A theme for Zone 1 has been why wasn't my neighborhood, or why isn't my neighborhood included in the attendance area of the new building? We looked at a variety of possibilities, and our software shows us through pin maps of students that this area is a very densely populated area. About two-thirds of the population of the new building were taken from the existing Rosemount Elementary Attendance Areas. As part of this process, we used our guiding principles to develop natural boundaries and roadways for transportation. Adding additional neighborhoods to the attendance area of the new building would require us to remove other neighborhoods to keep us from overcrowding in the new building. Another theme in Zone 1 was about families staying at their existing school. Families can apply through the inter-district transfer process. There would not be transportation provided, and acceptance would be based on availability of space. However, based on community feedback, we recommend prioritizing any families who are impacted by the attendance area shifts who complete the inter-district transfer form. Our main goal here was to alleviate overcrowding at Rosemount Elementary by making room for future developments in this area. All right, moving on to Zone 2. Zone 2 encompasses attendance area adjustments in the southern portion of our district. These are being proposed due to rapid population growth and the imbalanced distribution of students across schools. The schools impacted by the proposal are Diamond Path in the pink, Eastlake red, Highland, which is aqua, and then Shannon Park, which is yellow. So, here we have the same chart showing our current in yellow, and then what it would be through our proposed adjustments in terms of students living in the attendance area of these schools. Since Eastlake Elementary opened in 2017, the area has become densely populated, leading to significant overcrowding. The number of students living in the Eastlake Attendance Area is currently 913 students. In contrast, Shannon Park has 355 students, and Diamond Path has 384 students living in their attendance areas. The range or difference between the number of students living in a school's attendance area is as much as 556 students, or a whole elementary school's enrollment. This creates inequities in staffing allocations, operating budgets, and opportunities for students. The proposed adjustments aim to balance enrollment to be more equitable among Eastlake, Diamond Path, Highland, and Shannon Park, moving all schools towards optimal enrollment of 600 to 800 students. Under the new plan, Diamond Path will have 578 students living in its attendance area, leaving room to accept intra-district international studies interests. Eastlake drops to 710. Highland will have 662, and Shannon Park will be at 489. And they currently accept about 150 students who are intra-district transfers or open enroll. All schools will now be closer to the optimal range of 600 to 800 students, and more capable of providing an equitable experience for our students, families, and staff. The secondary process completed in 2022 worked better than expected to stabilize and balance middle school enrollment. The only middle school pathway that would be affected by the elementary balancing is this small neighborhood, it's 59 elementary students, that is moving from Eastlake to Shannon Park. Currently, 100% of students in the Shannon Park Attendance Area are also in the Rosemount Middle School Attendance Area. As we increase the Shannon Park Attendance Area, we pick up one neighborhood that is zoned for Scott Highlands Middle School. We're proposing to adjust only this middle school attendance area, so that this 10% of Shannon Park students can accompany their classmates to Rosemount Middle School, strengthening their secondary pathway. Even though there are district-wide attendance area adjustments to elementary, this is, there is no impact on high school, and this is the only middle school adjustment we are proposing. So, here we're talking about Zone 2 and the rebalance of a number of our southern elementary schools, Eastlake, Diamond Path, Highland, and Shannon Park. Our goal here is to balance enrollment and alleviate overcrowding from Eastlake Elementary. A theme of the questions and comments for Zone 2 was for students who are current third and fourth graders being able to finish their elementary time at their existing school. Because of this feedback, we are proposing a transportation transition plan for our current third and fourth graders, who will be fourth and fifth grade next year, to allow them to stay at their existing schools if they wish to do so. This plan would impact Zone 2 only, where there are students who are moving from an existing school to another existing school. If a family with a current K through second-grade student wishes to stay at their current building, they may apply through the intra-district transfer process. Transportation would not be provided, and acceptance would be based on capacity. However, based on community feedback, we're recommending prioritizing any families that are impacted by the attendance area shifts who complete the intra-district transfer This is also part of Zone 2. In this proposal, Diamond Path would be moving away from its magnet school designation. Diamond Path was originally configured as a magnet school. However, unlike our other magnet schools, it was not a racially identifiable school. It became a magnet school because of its international studies theme. Diamond Path will continue that instructional theme. However, in moving away from the magnet school status, we will phase out transporting students from outside of the school's attendance areas. With this attendance area rebalancing, Diamond Path's attendance area increases, so it'll have more students from its neighborhood, stabilizing its enrollment. Diamond Path will maintain capacity for intra-district transfers or open enrollment based on its international studies theme. If you recall from the previous slide, the current attendance area is 384, and the proposed attendance area would have 578 students. In the long run, this reduces overall transportation costs, saving between $400 and $600,000 a year. There would be no other changes to magnet programming. So, again, and questions here specifically related to Diamond Path Elementary. In our proposal, Diamond Path keeps its theme of international studies but moves away from its magnet designation, meaning we would move away from providing magnet transportation to Diamond Path. So, that's providing transportation to students living outside their attendance area. A community feedback theme specific to Diamond Path was similar to it in other areas, the ability to stay in school in the school because of their international studies theme. For Diamond Path, the transition process we're proposing would be the same as the rest of Zone 2. We are proposing a transportation transition plan for current third and fourth graders, who will be fourth and fifth grade next year, to allow them to stay at Diamond Path if they wish to do so. If a family with a current K through second grader wishes to stay at Diamond Path, they may apply through the intra-district transfer process. Transportation would not be provided, and acceptance would be based on capacity. However, based on community feedback, we recommend prioritizing any families who are impacted by the attendance area shifts who complete the intra-district transfer form. All right, we believe this proposal has a number of comprehensive benefits for our district. It addresses overcrowding at both Rosemount Elementary and Eastlake Elementary. The proposal also stabilizes enrollment at multiple elementary schools. We protect current early learning space in the elementary schools. For example, Eastlake has two rooms that were specifically designed for early childhood programming. However, because of their overcrowding, these rooms are currently being used for K-5 programming. Under this plan, those rooms would be used for what they are originally designed for, early childhood. And then, lastly, we believe this proposal allows us to have improved resource allocation across all impacted areas. And our communication plan and next steps are shown on this slide. So, we're bringing our final recommendations to the board this evening for board action. By November 15th, all families impacted by the attendance area adjustments will receive messaging notifying them of the final decision, and providing information related to the intra-district transfer process and deadlines. December 15th is a priority deadline for intra-district transfer forms to be completed. Families can continue to complete these forms after December 15th. However, the 15th is our priority deadline, where families impacted by the attendance area adjustments would receive preference. Families who completed the intra-district transfer form prior to the 15th would be notified of approval by December 30th. And then, the elementary magnet school application closes on January 3rd. The state is important for families who are applying for any of our magnet schools other than Diamond Path. At this time, I would be happy to take any questions you may have.
Thank you. This is an action item for us tonight, so before we move into questions, is there a motion to approve the proposal for new attendance areas as presented?
Move approval.
Second.
Motion by Jackie, seconded by Leah. Are there any questions or comments from the audience? Seeing none. Seeing none questions or comments from board members. Jackie?
I would really just like to thank you for this complete report. It's never easy to move people from one school to another, and that's a good thing. They don't want to move because you love your school. You love Shannon Park or Red Pine or wherever you've been, and that's a good thing. But you've done such a nice job here when you start looking at your guiding principles that you started with. You're keeping neighborhoods together. You're allowing room for growth in the schools when you're moving people. Continuous boundaries, natural boundaries, transportation for efficiencies, consideration of feeder schools into the secondary attendance. You wouldn't want that one little poor little square of kids going to over there when they should be going over Rosemont with the rest of their school people and hearing the state and federal guidelines. I think you've done just a really nice job. And it makes a difference in an elementary school if there's 913 kids or if there's 355 kids. It just makes a huge difference for all those little bodies. So I think you've done a really nice job. I will support this and just thank you. You gave families' voice. We heard what they were saying. You gave them some choice, and I think this is really a smart move.
Yeah, thank you for that. Appreciate that. And that's definitely something we heard through our community feedback sessions that people are really connected to and love their schools.
Yeah, and that's good. We don't want them to say, oh, good, now you can finally get out of that school.
Any other questions or comments from board members?
I just want to say I noticed a few changes that seem to be from community involvement, and I really appreciated seeing those, especially the prioritizing of transfer applications, intra-district transfer. I think that's a great idea. If anyone is out there, that window is currently open now, correct? So if there's families watching, they could even apply tonight if they wanted.
Yeah, so in fact, as we've been talking to the community, we've been encouraging to fill this out in the event that this does pass. So to date, we have about 91 of those applications already accounted for and filled out. So yes, people can fill them out right now.
Excellent. Thank you. All right, we have a motion to approve the proposal for the new attendance areas as presented by Jackie, seconded by Leah. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye. Those opposed? Motion carries on a four-zero vote. Thank you very much. All right. That brings us now to our new business portion of our agenda. I'd like to welcome Shelley Munson to the podium to go over 2025-26 school calendar.
Good evening, Chairperson Johnson, members of the board, and Superintendent Bosoni. I'll be referring to the proposed school calendar for the 2025-26 school year. This planning calendar was developed and reviewed by district and building administrators and representatives of Dakota County United Educators and shared with parent leaders for their feedback. The calendar you're looking at is our planning calendar. We'll provide a calendar specifically for families to clearly identify school days once the calendar is approved. I want to highlight some characteristics of the proposed calendar for you. This calendar would continue the recommendation made by task force last year and approved by the board for three additional professional development days for teachers to provide adequate time for the extensive teacher professional development related to the district's transition to structured literacy as required by the REDACT. The district will continue the transition to structured literacy in 2025-26 with professional development for secondary and other identified teachers requiring approximately 45 hours of training. These additional days also allow for needed professional learning for our staff to support the implementation of other new curriculum in multiple subjects with our students at the elementary and secondary levels. This aligns with our District 196 strategic priority of achievement of strengthening and aligning curriculum and instructional practices across all classrooms to improve student outcomes and staff efficacy. Similar to our current school year, middle school and high school students will have two school days prior to Labor Day. Our secondary students have two more days in their school year than our elementary students. This allows for a calendar where all grades, kindergarten through 12th grade, finish school on the same date in the first week in June. We'll continue to have a student assessment day for elementary students prior to Labor Day with the first regular school day for grades kindergarten through fifth grade on September 2nd. Winter break would be for eight days of no school for students and school term staff. But connected to that break, school term or teaching staff would have two professional development days, really a data analysis instructional alignment day and a professional development day. This provides for two full weeks of break for our students during that time. Spring break continues to be the first or to be the last full week in March, and the last day of school would be June 4th. As we look ahead, the calendar committee would like to seek some input from stakeholders and explore more options for the next calendar, the 2026-27, before bringing that calendar proposal to you at a future meeting. So tonight, on behalf of our administration, I recommend that you would approve the 2025-26 school calendar at your next board meeting on December 9th, and I'd be happy to answer any questions you have.
Thank you. At this time, are there any questions or comments from the audience?
Good job.
Seeing none questions or comments from board members. We look forward to seeing you on December 9th.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, I'd like to welcome Rachel Hughes to the podium to go over 2025-26 middle school and high school course revisions.
Good evening, Chairperson Johnson, members of the board, and Superintendent Bosoni. I am here this evening to present an overview of the proposed middle school and high school course revisions for the 25-26 school year. Thank you for the opportunity to speak with you tonight. I'm excited to present the proposed courses, offerings for the upcoming school year, and demonstrate how these proposals align with the district's 196 strategic priority of student achievement, as well as aligning with our district vision, engaging students with opportunities in academics, arts, and athletics, or otherwise known as our AAA philosophy. This presentation is a part of an annual cycle to show how our collaborative efforts results in a wide range of course offerings for our students. Our course revisions each year reflect the story of what is happening in education at the local, state, and national levels. Many factors shape the proposed course changes each year. One key factor is the academic content standards developed by the Minnesota Department of Education. School districts are responsible for integrating these standards into specific courses and ensuring alignment across the curriculum. While the standards themselves may not always change, where and how the content is taught might shift. An example of this is personal finance. We currently have this course in place, and with the new legislation, we are realigning our current class to include the standards that MDE has established. Additionally, courses may occasionally be restructured or renamed to better align with updated content or reflect changes in academic standards. One area we continue to enhance is providing opportunities for our students to earn college credit while receiving high school credit by taking college in the schools, advanced placement, and other dual credit options. These courses continue to help our parents and our district save tuition dollars and engage our students to be college-ready. For the 25-26 school year, we are excited to continue expanding our college credit opportunities with the proposed addition of Psychology 1110: Introduction to Psychology at Apple Valley High School. This course will provide students with transferable college credit from Normandale Community College. Additionally, our collaboration with Normandale enables us to offer an introduction to teaching courses at our high schools, which also results in college credit. These programs not only enrich our students' academic experience, but also lay a strong foundation for seamless transition to college. In addition to expanding, oops, here we go. In addition to expanding college credit opportunities, we are also focusing on providing diverse career preparation pathways for students who plan to enter the workforce directly after high school. By offering specialized programs and partnerships, we are aligning with emerging workforce needs, developing essential career readiness skills, and addressing student interests. For the 25-26 school year, examples include a new web design and development course at Rosemont High School, along with the introduction of a Level III American Sign Language elective, which has gained remarkable popularity. Building on student interest, Eastview is proposing a Spanish 6 course, as well expanding their elected offerings with the addition of Yoga 2. Eagan High School and Eastview have course proposals focusing on leadership, which aligns with our district's mission of educating, developing, and inspiring our students for lifelong success. In addition, there's a proposal for a new career and technical education course, Advanced Welding, for our high school students, and at the middle level, Valley Middle School of STEM, creating a pathway to high school in science, technology, and engineering by offering advanced FabLab 3D printing and FabLab design, further supporting students in gaining hands-on skills for high-demand careers. All of these amazing courses, proposals begin with the dedication of our teachers and administrators. Their collaborative efforts with instruction achievement lay the groundwork for developing these programs. The entire process is thoroughly reviewed and approved by our cabinet, culminating in your final approval in December. You can see on the detailed course list in your board packet, a number of new courses are proposed to be added, and many courses are renamed or restructured. At this time, I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have. Thank you for your time this evening.
Thank you. At this time, are there any questions or comments from the audience? Seeing none questions or comments from board members.
Well, I do.
Go ahead, Jackie.
I'll just keep talking here tonight. I like how these have been set out. I think we've talked about this before, and I love it when you can look at this class that's being added. The one I have pulled up right now is FabLab Design, and that's an advanced FabLab in 3D printing, and a lot of them are involved around leadership. But you've got the rationale, you've got the established goals, you've got the essential question, what are kids going to be able to learn and know out of this? What is this understanding? What will students know? And understanding of what students will be able to do. And I think it really helps kind of cement that in your head when you're reading these. This is what we're doing. It's not just, oh, well, we've got a FabLab in here and you can make some stuff. But you can go through and look and how you design, how do you use design? How do you use CAD software lab? How do you do, how do you create a 3D? And so in every class like that is run through and very structured, so it's really easy to see what we're adding. So some of the classes are just, our teachers are always amazing. You know, and now we're looking at Spanish 6, another college in the school, so we can get, kids get dual credit leadership classes. The ones from our back teacher in Eastview High School, she's got a lot of kids doing a lot of amazing things, and she was just here, I lost her name.
Mia Hendricks.
Mia Hendricks, good. And she's got a lot of ones in here too that we've talked about, we talked about with her before. So congratulations to everybody. I mean, nice job. It keeps our curriculum fresh as we keep moving on and meeting our students' needs.
Thank you. We have some great teachers and schools that are supporting all the great work.
Yeah.
I agree. There's some fun classes out there.
Other questions or comments from the board?
I remember for many years on the board, whenever this agenda, this agenda item comes up every year, and I still remember Joel Albright saying every year, this is my favorite agenda item ever, and it's quickly becoming one of mine too. So absolutely love seeing how just, just the diversity of courses here that we're offering, everything from physical education to college in the schools, which actually save our families money in post-secondary education, to trades courses, to web development. I mean, there's just so much in here, and I know that some of these courses that we do might only be at, might be only available at one school right now, but depending on the success we have with it, then you can easily expand it to other schools.
Yep.
Love seeing that as well. So just a great agenda item. I look forward to this every year now as well, to see how we're evolving to meet the needs of our students, and I think this is another great way to show that. So I look forward to welcoming you back on December 9th for the second reading.
Thank you, Chair Johnson.
Thank you. All right, that brings us to the other action portion of our agenda, and I would like to welcome Dani Duchene and Jamie Fay to the podium to go over our fiscal year 2023 financial
Good evening, Chair Johnson, Superintendent Bosoni, members of the school board, and our District 196 community. District administration is pleased to present the District 196 Annual Financial Audit for the 2023-24 fiscal year. The fiscal year 24 audit includes a clean, unmodified audit opinion. Tonight's presentation will also note one process improvement opportunity related to child nutrition direct certification eligibility, of which our nutrition services team has already addressed. Assuming board approval tonight, the audit documentation included in the board packet will be posted on the district's finance website later this week. Before introducing tonight's presenter from the audit firm, Aid Bailey, I'd like to take just a brief moment to thank a few individuals and departments who were instrumental in completing this audit. As you know, the audit is a months-long expedition that requires many hours of planning, collaboration, and execution across many departments within our district. A special thank you goes out to Christopher Nyanga Robshaw, Director of Finance and Operations, Adam Lloyd, Controller, and Kib Woods, Manager of Financial Systems Reporting and Compliance, for their leadership and teamwork on various components of the audit. We'd also like to extend a thank you to other individuals and departments across the district who helped pull documentation, answer a lot of questions, sometimes answer those questions again and again and again, and providing the important guidance and context to our team as well as our auditors. Finally, our finance team would like to extend a great big thank you to Jamie and her team from Aid Bailey for their work and their partnership during this audit season. At this time, it's my pleasure to introduce Jamie Fay, partner at Aid Bailey, to present the District 196 2023-24 Annual Financial Audit.
Thanks, Dani. Good evening, Chairperson Johnson, school board members, and Superintendent Bosoni. As Dani said, I am Jamie Fay. I am an audit partner with the firm Aid Bailey. My team is physically located in Mankato, Minnesota, but we do a number of our audits remotely, so we kind of work from anywhere. So tonight, we're going to talk about the year-end financial statements for June 30, 2024. So when I say this year, that's what I mean. It's July 1st, 2023 through June 30, 2024. So when we come in and do our audit, we do a number of procedures. We do kind of planning procedures, we do normal procedures, we do an unpredictable procedure every year, and that's all required by the standards. So this year, our unpredictable procedure looked a little bit at some payroll processes. We just picked a couple things that we've been seeing in some schools around the country, did some procedures, nothing to note there. So any of the findings we will come up with or we would talk about in this presentation, but nothing out of that procedure. So first and foremost, the first question I get when we get talking about the audit is what did you do? What is our opinion? So when you hire Aid Bailey to do an audit, you hire us to come in and test a handful of transactions to recalculate a few things and to really take a sample of what the district is doing to give an opinion on if the financial statements are materially accurate or not. The financial statements are 167 pages, so if you want, you go ahead and read those. You let me know if you want to chat through, but we're just going to go through a few slides here to give you kind of the high level. I know not everyone loves numbers as much as myself and the finance team. So as Dani said, the district received a clean, unmodified opinion. What that means is the financial statements are materially accurate. I just like to point that out because that does not mean that we recalculated every single transaction. It does not mean we tied things to the penny. It means that we looked at a sample, we had a materiality threshold, and everything looked good from that standpoint. The second piece of the audit is the financial or the federal audit. So you get a financial statement audit, which is over the district's kind of normal operations, general fund, community service, those types of things. Then if governments expend more than $750,000 of federal money, you have to have this separate audit. A lot of times, it's called a single audit or a federal audit. So we give an opinion on that as well. So we gave the district an unmodified opinion on that as well. This year, we looked at the Esr dollars and the child nutrition dollars, so that made up about 65% of the district's total 27.9 million in federal awards there. So once we talk about the opinions, you have clean, unmodified opinions, that's what you want, that's what you've gotten in the past. The second question I always get is what were our findings? What do you have to tell us? So as far as findings, for the financial statement audit, we had no findings to report there, which is great news. With the federal award audit, that specific federal audit, as Dani alluded to, there was one finding that we came up with in the child nutrition. It's really the food service. There was an improper eligibility. Really, it was a data input error from a certification report. Really, it was a data input error from a certification report. A student was input incorrectly in terms of if they would get free meals or not. It was selected as part of our testing, and so we walked through that with the district. It did not seem to be a widespread issue. It was only, we only found one instance of it in the 60 transactions we looked at, and we talked about it with the district at length. They have already worked on implementing some changes there, so definitely nothing that we saw is widespread. If there was anything that was material, we would need to modify an opinion over that, so I'd like to clarify that. And then, the last piece in terms of findings is the state auditor's office in Minnesota requires us to test a certain number of state statutes and making sure that our governments are in compliance there. We noted nothing that we needed to report there, which is great news as well. So, now, we're going to look at some numbers, and I've put them in graphs and colors, so hopefully you can get some value out of that. So, first and foremost, cash and investments. There's not a right or wrong number here. This is just to show you where the district's cash and investments have been for the last five years. This is the district overall. It does exclude any cash held with fiscal agent or bond, or building construction cash, really because those dollars are being set aside for construction or payoff of a loan in the future. So, this is where the district's cash is at at the end of 2024. It's 232 million. So, then, we'll talk about the general fund. So, the district has a number of funds. The general fund seems to be where we focus the most amount of time, because that's kind of the most of the operations. So, first and foremost, the one thing that drives the general fund operations is ADMs, Average Daily Membership Student Count. We take this number and work through a number of different tests alongside of this number, and you can see the fluctuation in the last five years is really pretty small for the district, so just a little bit up and down here and there, so pretty consistent. The next page, this one's the all-numbers page, so bear with me, I know it's small. But in summary, this is looking at the budget of the general fund compared to what really happened, and then on the far right, there's a variance column to say, how do we do compared to where we budgeted? So, for revenues, you had about 506 million of revenues that actually came in. That is about 10 million more than you had budgeted, which we like to call conservative budgeting, meaning you budgeted a little bit less than you actually got. That's only 2% of the total budget, so very, very close there. And then, for expenditures, total of about 495 million for expenditures for the general fund. That's only a 0.8% variance from the budget, spent a little bit less than you budgeted, which again, is also conservative budgeting. You're budgeting a little more for expenditures than you actually had, which is pretty common from what we see in Minnesota for school districts. All of that comes down to, at the end of the day, a change in the fund balance of a positive of about 20 million. There's a few other financing sources and uses. There's a couple in there that are accounting-based items for different lease-type arrangements, but all in all, an increase in the fund balance for the general fund of about 20 million. So, at the end of the day, the fund balance in the general fund is about 112 million. That's a big number, so we'll look at that in a little different breakdown in a couple of slides, but that's where we're at for the general fund. So, when we talk about that number, why do we want to have that positive fund balance? Number one, it contributes to a favorable bond rating, so if you're going to go out for bonds, you get a lower interest rate if you have a good rating. In order to get that, similar to how personal finances work, you've got to have something on reserve. Number two, it produces some investment income for the district, so you've got some money set aside, you can invest that and kind of utilize some of those working capital needs. And then, third, and I would probably argue most importantly, is that it offers a cushion for the district if there is something like a global pandemic. So, you've got a little bit there that you can utilize, so there's a number of ways that you can kind of analyze fund balance, but really wanting to make sure you're comfortable as a school board with what that cushion looks like. There's a number of categories also with fund balances, so I'm not going to go into too much detail on these, but I just want to point out that there are a number of categories that go into that number, and we'll talk about the details of those on the next page. But a couple of them, the district has control over what they are, and a couple of them, the district doesn't really have any control over. So, this is, I apologize, there's a second number page. This is also a number page. So, this is, again, the general fund. So, this is that 112 million number, broken down into those different categories. So, the top line is called non-spendable. In accounting terms, that is required to be equal to things like pre-pays and inventory. So, the district doesn't have a lot of control over what that number is, we just have to have that there. Next is a number of categories under the restricted title. There's about 339 million there in restricted. What that means is you have gotten a revenue source from an outside party that is legally restricted to be used on something. Typically, this is a lot of times dollars from MDE, or from the state of Minnesota, or from a federal government, or something like that. So, things like capital projects levies, safe schools levies, that's all restricted. So, that is set aside, you will spend that at a later date on those specific restrictions. The next category is called assigned. There's about 26 million sitting in the unassigned numbers. There's three different categories there. These categories are really the ones that the district has a little bit of control over what they want to put in there. I know the finance department, we chatted a lot about these numbers, they put a lot of thought into what these numbers should be, so at the end of the day, landed at about 26 million there. And then, the unassigned number is really, at the end of the day, kind of what's left in there. So, about 69 million is left in that unassigned number, which sounds like a big number, and again, we'll analyze it with a little bit of a percent in another couple of pages, but I just wanted to break down the numbers for you. The next slide is that same kind of breakout. This is for the last five years, just so you can see where the district is compared to where the district's been. Overall, you can see that there is that jump that we talked about, and there's a jump in a couple of the categories, not a huge significant shift in any of the categories, but just kind of moving up the ladder. So, when we look at that number, the first question I always get is, well, what are we supposed to have? Just tell me what to have, and we'll put it in there. Really, there isn't a right or wrong answer to that. The only guidance we have found is from a National Government Finance Officers Association. So, what I like to point districts to is their policy. The district has a policy of a minimum unassigned fund balance, no less than 5% of your annual operating expenditures. So, that's what the district has put in place. That number can be looked at if you think, ah, we've got some big projects, we want to kind of bump that up. That policy can be revised. I do have a number of districts that kind of look at that and kind of do a gut check. We have a conversation with the finance office every year. Hey, did you make any changes? Yes, no? Let's take a look at that. For perspective, 5% is about a half of a month of expenditures. So, this is the slide that's going to show you kind of that breakdown. So, the red line on here is that 5%. So, this graph is showing you what the unrestricted and unassigned fund balances are as a percentage of general fund expenditures for the year. So, you can see the blue and the green. There's a little bit of a difference in whether the assigned numbers are included or not. So, you can see you are above your minimum, so for 2024, you had 19.2 and 13.8, and you can see you've been above that minimum for the five years in the past. So, that is the general fund. For the rest of the pages, we're going to look at some of the other funds of the district, kind of the big ones that we really talk about. The first one is the Community Service Fund. This is the ending fund balance for the Community Service Fund, went from about 3.9 million in 2023 up to about 4.2 million in 2024. The next one is Food Service Fund, so this went from about 7.9 million up to about 10.2. There is an extra red line on this one. This extra red line is, MDE has said that you have to have, there's a maximum, there's a cap on what you can have in this fund balance. That has been a challenge for districts ever since, really since 2020, since COVID hit, because there are requirements on how much you need to charge for meals. There is federal funding coming in, there's a lot of restrictions on how you can use this money, so staying below that threshold, I have seen really challenging for a number of my Minnesota districts. And really, all it means is you've got to work with MDE, let them know, yep, we noticed it, and they'll work back and forth with the district on that number, but we just like to put it on there, so you're just aware of that, because it is in a state statute. The district does have a couple other funds that relate to some construction and debt, but those really aren't operational in terms of, you know, the general fund and kind of the day-to-day. So, that is all the graphs I have, and with that, I will take any questions that you have.
At this time, are there any questions or comments from the audience? Seeing none, questions or comments from board members? Sakoudin.
Just wanted to say thank you for the report that you gave us. It's always good to have a clean audit report. It tells us that we're doing something right. But I'm just curious, I know that we've been maintaining that at assigned reserve, which has been in discussion before, where some of internally on the sidelines, we have been talking as well, as a board, to that 5% minimum to have on reserve, which is then, with inflation, everything given, and the large projects that we have, you said that's a half a month. Recommendation on personal level, at least you need to have ready fund of three months, something like that, so that you could sustain. You mentioned other districts, and I think now is like 20.416, which, you know, GFAA recommends. What is the recommendation or the go-around nowadays on other districts on our level?
Sure. So, there really isn't a recommendation. It really has to do with how each district operates. I have some districts that want that number to be really high, because they want it to be a stretch goal that they're reaching towards, and they want people to know that it's important that they get there eventually. I have other districts that set that policy really low, because they never, ever, ever want to go below it, and if they go below it, they make hard cuts. I have other districts that kind of put a range in place, and they say, hey, we want to kind of be in here, and as long as we're in here, we're good. And it really depends on the life cycle of each district. Every district spends their dollars differently, so that's kind of a non-answer answer, but it really, really depends by each specific district on how they operate.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, absolutely.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments from the board?
All right. With that, I would like to say thank you to the district, thank you to the finance department. As Danny alluded to a little bit, the auditors come in, and we shake things up, and we ask a lot of questions, and it takes a long time, and we really appreciate their diligence with it and getting us to the finish line.
Excellent. Before you leave, is there a motion to approve the audit as presented?
Still moved.
Thank you.
Second.
Motion by Sakoudin, second by Jackie. All those in favor of approving the audit, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries on a 4-0 vote. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right. Next up, under other action, I would like to welcome Jill Coyle to the podium to go over Policy 502: Student Transfers.
Good evening, Chairperson Johnson, members of the board, and Superintendent Bolsoni. I am before you tonight with other action with Policy 502: Student Transfers. So, earlier tonight, you approved certain elementary boundary adjustments. These boundary adjustments may result in some students seeking to stay at their current schools and utilize the inter-district transfer application process. Policy 502, as written, is broad enough to cover such transfer applications, with the exception of the two years of transportation eligibility for certain qualifying students, specifically third and fourth graders, current third and fourth graders in Zone 2. So, the proposed edit of Policy 502 can be found in Section 3.6.3 of the policy, which covers transportation due to boundary adjustments. The change is simply to add a reference to tonight's November 4th board action regarding the elementary boundary adjustments. Minor updates were also made to the references section, and a couple of typos were caught and changed while we were at it. So, while I'm here with these very small changes to Policy 502, I also wanted to take a moment to note for the board and the audience that we're not here with new business and old business, as is typical with policy changes. It's here with just one reading as other action, and so that is something that we're able to do in certain circumstances. And the four circumstances in which we can do it with one reading rather than two would be situations in which a law change requires us to make a change. It's not the case here. We can also do it when there's emergency circumstances, such that we need to make a change right away. We can do it for very routine types of ordinary changes, and then, we can do it when it's deemed necessary to act just once, as determined by the board chair and the superintendent. So, here, I think we've got three out of four, right? The timeliness here is the inter-district transfer application process is open now until mid-December, so we'd like to get this little change made sooner rather than later. And then, it is a very small change, quite routine, and there is the recommendation of the superintendent and the board chair to do it in one. So, while I was here, I thought I'd do a little birdwalk and give you that background, so you're not wondering, why is she doing it just once instead of twice? With that, you do have the board, the proposed changes before you to Policy 502. It is an action item tonight for your approval. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. And before we go into questions, is there a motion to approve?
So.
I heard a motion by Leah, seconded by Jackie, correct? All right. Are there any questions or comments from the audience? Seeing none, questions or comments from board members?
No.
Thank you very much. As you said, pretty routine and timely. So, there is a motion by Leah, seconded by Jackie. All those in favor of approval, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries on a 4-0 vote. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
That brings us almost to the end of our long agenda tonight. I will turn it over to Superintendent Bolsoni for superintendent updates.
Okay, thank you, Chair Johnson. As part of our district goals this year, we are scheduling a series of board reports related to our district's strategic priorities, and tonight, at your tables, I'm providing a proposed schedule of those reports as agreed upon during our goal-setting meeting, which occurred earlier this year. These reports cover specific implementation plans that support our four strategic priorities, which are achievement, equity, well-being, and resources. Please review this list of reports and let us know if you have any questions or see any gaps. We have an ambitious agenda for this upcoming year, and I have been talking with Chair Johnson about the possibility of scheduling two meetings per month beginning in January, and we look forward to spending time with the board to both inform and monitor our most important priorities. On a lighter note, last week, I was able to see the Apple Valley High School's performance of Sister Act, and I would encourage all members of the public, our staff and the board, to attend this week. There are shows on Friday and Saturday. I'm continually impressed and also inspired by our talented students. Tickets are still available for this weekend's performance. And just a quick reminder that we are in the application window for parents and guardians who are interested in applying to have their child attend a magnet school in District 196 for next year. The deadlines to submit applications are December 15th for Valley Middle School of STEM, December 20th for the School Environmental Studies, and January 3rd for Elementary Magnet Schools. The Elementary Magnet Schools are hosting events this month for people who want to learn more, and for more information and links to the applications, please go to district196.org/magnetschools. Thank you. That ends my report for tonight.
Thank you. Are there any board members with items they'd like to share?
Just another thumbs up for Sister Act at Apple Valley High School. It was great. It was super good. So, make sure you go get tickets.
Fantastic. And I just wanted to share real briefly that, just a reminder for anyone that's been following along, we do have two board vacancies that the board will be working to fill after the election tomorrow. That's your other reminder to not to forget to vote if you haven't done so already. That application will, again, be open next week for anyone interested in applying to be a member of the school board, and for more information, you can go to the District 196 website for information. And I'd be remiss if I didn't acknowledge on November, that next Monday, November 11, is Veterans Day. Please make sure to thank a veteran. Also, this is one of those random Mondays of Veterans Day, where we actually don't have kids in the classroom, but a lot of our Veteran Day activities are going to be taking place in the schools on November 12th, the following day, so thank you. With that, that brings us to the end of our agenda. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved. Second.
Motion by Jackie, second by Leah. All those in favor of adjournment, say aye.
Aye.